Would like to call to order the September 5th, 2023 Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome everyone. Commissioner Shu, we were waiting on you to arrive and your timing was absolutely perfect. Yes, so first up is the approval of the work session agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes on page three? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All oppose, no. That motion passes. And we move to discussion items, item 3.1. We are happy to have Jacob Wintick with us to talk about the St. Stevens Park Master Plan. Welcome Jacob.
Good afternoon, everybody. How are y'all doing?
Very good.
Good. So my name is Jacob Wintick. I'm one of our park managers here with the county with the Active Living in Parks Department. We're not here to talk about any of our current parks, but one of our future parks. So we want to talk a little bit today about the St. Stevens property in Mount Pleasant. And we've been working for over a year now with the contractor, Benish, and Mr. Jeff Ashbaugh, who's here with us today. And we've been working on what the park could look like down the road. So through the process, we've involved NC Wildlife, some third-party foresters, as well as biohabitats. Some, trying to get as many people involved in the process as possible to really plan this site properly. It's a very unique site. Some of y'all may have had the chance to come see it with us. Very unique, some really unique habitats to it, some unique wildlife that live there. It's just, there's nothing else really like it that I've seen in Cabarrus County. We want to make sure that we build it right to preserve that for the long haul. So I'm going to kind of turn it over to Jeff and we want to hear y'all's feedback and happy to answer any questions you may have based off this, this plan so far, okay?
Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Ashbaugh with Benish. Now first off, I want to start and just say thank you for this opportunity to work with Cabarrus County staff and the Cabarrus County community on the development of this master plan. It's been truly a great opportunity and an honor. So the purpose of this presentation is to really provide you with an update on the master plan. And if we can go to the next slide, want to start, want to start, sorry, let's try this. How about that? Want to start with giving you a little bit about the past master planning process, just an overview. The green highlighted, you see all the steps here on the page, the bulleted items. The green highlighted items are the steps that we've already completed. And then the gray highlighted text are the remaining steps. So we went out and did a site analysis. We visited the park staff, I mean, visited the park site with staff and investigated the physical aspects of the site, really did our homework on it. From there, we also have met with staff to brainstorm on potential activities that are appropriate for the park. And we've also looked at the current park and recreation master plan, the comprehensive master plan, to get understanding where this park fits into the system and activities that are appropriate as well. And then we've met with the public. We've had one public input session and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And we've brainstormed and developed some concepts and vetted them. And then we'll show you, kind of give you a preview of the current concept, if you will. The one that we feel like is most appropriate. So this first, first slide, this next slide, sorry, will give you a little bit of context. So this, the park site, you can see it highlighted, outlined in white here with that irregular shape right in the middle of the slide or somewhat close to that, is about, it's in northeast Cabarrus County. It's a few miles from downtown Mount Pleasant, along Highway 49. Oh, sorry. Sorry, I'm going a little bit too far. Here we go. Thank you for your patience. So the site here, this slide shows you a picture of the park site. It's outlined in the bold yellow line. You'll notice St. Stevens Church Road on the left side of the screen and Lent's Harness Shop Road on the right side of the screen, Highway 49 to the bottom of the screen. The site is approximately 616 acres. So the site has good suitable access to roads, both from St. Stevens and Lent's Harness. All right, wanted to show you a little bit about some of the things we learned about the site. So this is an aerial photo, something that's very important. Here, the park site is outlined in black. There's a bold black line. And the key takeaway here is you'll see some light green areas and some dark green areas. So the light green areas are agricultural fields. There's approximately 100, 110 acres in agriculture currently being farmed. And then the darker green areas are pine forest and hardwood forest. This slide speaks to a little bit of the elevation change that's, that's out there. One of the important aspects of the site is the terrain. The site has over 250 feet of elevation change from its highest point to its lowest point. And that's quite unique for a park site in the Piedmont. It almost has that mini Morrow Mountain State Park feel. Because of that elevation change, there's some nice views from the top of it. There's a ridge and you can see right in the center of this slide, there's three red asterisks. If you line those up, there's a ridge that runs in the north to south direction. So from that point, it really bisects the park. There's really nice views from those hilltops that we want to try to capture with the design. That ridge divides the site in half. I'm going to go back one, just so you'll see. Two very important features. You'll notice the two blue ovals, oval shapes there by the red asterisks. Those are upland bogs, or some people might call it a swamp, a wetland. What's very unique is it's up at the 250-foot elevation point, so it's up high. Usually you see bogs down at low points by creeks and lakes and that sort of thing. This one's up high. And it's very important. In fact, it's on the state's North Carolina Heritage Inventory Map. It's one of their sites. And here's some pictures, right here. It has some very unique biodiversity. So you can see some of the pictures, one on the left, you can see some of the wildlife that's there. A lot of amphibians, there's one of the salamanders that we saw out on the site. In fact, we had Jeffrey Hall, he's one of the state biologists, he's a herpetologist. We actually had him come out and do a site visit with us. And he could go and collect some of the wildlife out there and show it to us. And we feel like, it was like a mini little field trip. We think that's a great opportunity to really help school kids and things learn. It's a very exciting, very fun day. And here's some other pictures of the park site. You can see some of the agricultural fields, one of the agricultural ponds, some of the rocks and creeks that are also there. So just giving you a little bit about, you know, kind of the look and the feel of, of the site. So we did have one public meeting. It was very well attended. We had over, well, we had just right at 100 people attend that meeting. The Mount Pleasant community was really fantastic and came out in big time for the meeting. And they provide a lot of input. And here, from that input session, we received the following direction. These are the 10 top activities from the public input session. Hiking and walking trails, equestrian trails was number two, and I'll note that is a write-in activity. Three is a scenic overlook. Four, environmental education, nature center, followed by playground, open space, green space, bird, bird, wildlife watching, picnic shelters, plant ID, disc golf course, and cabins. So one thing to kind of point out is, we had a kind of a list of pre-selected activities, park activities that you might find common, you know, common in a passive park. We kind of listed them out and had the public vote for the things that they thought they would like to see, things that were important to them. And then we also gave the public an opportunity to write in activities, things that were important to them as well. And that's where the equestrian trails came in. So literally, they wrote in and voted for each of those activities. And that's how we prioritize these top 10 activities. So this is the concept plan. We based a, prepared a concept plan based on that input and kind of some overlighting, overlying principles that we thought were important to note about this concept. One, it was, the vision for the park is to develop a low-impact nature park, like a nature preserve. Not a nature preserve, but like a nature preserve. And this park will have a nature-focused, passive recreation that enhances, protects, and preserves the environmentally sensitive aspects of the site. We also made it a goal that this, there's an opportunity to restore and enhance and highlight and educate the opportunities that this park presents, to educate the public about nature because of these upland bogs and some of the unique features that it has. So in the interest of time, I'll kind of walk you through the concept plan and some of the activities and things about it. So this conceptual plan, it has, proposes three access points. And they're all shown with the black arrows. Two along St. Stevens Church Road, one to the north and one to the south. And then a third access point to the right from Lent's Harness Shop Road. The main entrance, shown in the top left of the plan, will serve a nature center area. More about that in a minute. The second entrance on St. Stevens, in the middle of the park there, will serve as a, will have a maintenance facility and also serve as a trailhead. And the third entrance from Lent's Harness Shop Road provides an access to the east side of the park. And it will also serve as a, as a trailhead. We feel like that third entrance to the east side of the park, it not only provides public access, but it also will provide a maintenance access, any kind of equipment access to get into the park and emergency vehicles, because the park is, probably takes 30 to 45 minutes just to walk from the east side of the park to the west side of the park. So we feel like this is an important entrance. And there will need to be a vehicular bridge in that area to, to make that Lent's Harness crossing work. It crosses a drainage feature. There will be short park roads. We're trying to really, again, propose a low-impact development. So those black lines that you see connected to the arrows are about the length of that, of the park road. Maybe a little bit longer. That would be a paved, wider road, just enough to bring vehicles in and provide a parking area. The one to the north at the nature center, regarding parking, if you will, would have a parking, both buses and cars in the 100 to 120 car range. The one, the second entrance on St. Stevens would be more like 10 to 40. And the same for Lent's Harness, about a 10 to 40 car parking lot. One thing to note is, those have all been located in the flatter areas of the site so they can easily be expanded in the future if more parking is desired. But one way to keep development costs down is to have smaller parking lots, until the demand reaches the point that we need larger ones. Okay, regarding the activities, this, the mass, the concept plan, again, it's just preliminary at this stage. Eight of the 10 activities that were in the list that we just reviewed are in this plan. There will be a nature center. This will be a park building, again, on the north end of the site with an emphasis, emphasis on nature education. This building would probably be in the 6,000 square foot range. We haven't decided on a size, but we think it would be on the smaller size because everything is well-inseptic out here. So the infrastructure would not support a tremendously large facility. But this building would have exhibit, exhibit space, classrooms, offices, restrooms. And this will be a nature center that a lot of school groups would like to come and visit. And around the nature center would be a playground, a lengthy ADA trail loop, wildflower meadow, and restored wetland area. The idea is to create kind of a, a mini park within a park, if you will. Up in the northern corner of the site, this would be a very busy, active area. And by design, by keeping all the, a lot of the higher-traffic impact areas up in that corner, that tends to protect a lot of the more environmentally sensitive aspects in other parts of the park. So it gives a place to really have a busy spot, too. The maintenance area at St. Stevens, this area will function as a trailhead, parking, restrooms. It would house park equipment. And as noted, you'll see a lot of yellow, a lot of green, light green on the map. Those areas are in cultivation. The county has an agreement with the farmer to use this for cultivation for several more years. So we were respectful of that and kept that in the plan. Those would remain in cultivation. The Lent's Harness Trailhead provides restrooms, additional parking, and provide a public access point along Lent's Harness Road and this side of the park. Because again, it's a pretty long distance from one side of the park to the other. And this allows the public on that side of the park, easy access or convenient access. And we realized that people would probably start parking, parking along Lent's Harness Road if they didn't have a parking spot. They're going to make their own. So we feel like there needs to be one over there. Okay, so just a little bit more. So the main feature of the park is the trail system. So the park will have regional connectivity and be a part of the Carolina Thread Trail. I know you've heard a lot about it, the Thread Trail. One day, St. Stevens Park will connect to the new Virginia Foil Park down in Mount Pleasant, just a few miles away to the south. And heading north from the site, it will connect to Gold Hill's Gold Rush Trail that is something planned in the future. So within, within the park, there are over nine miles of trail planned. And as mentioned before, the park has over 250 feet of elevation change in the park. So we were very strategic in the routing. You can see that it winds, it's very windy. It's the darker, the darker black line up there represents that 10-foot-wide main trail. It winds through the park. It's strategically routed in such a way to keep the slopes manageable and is very consistent with other trail networks that you have at Rob Wallace Park and Franklin's Park. There, let's see here. So it also, what it does is the trail, it can, it also connects all of the vehicular access points. The nature center provides two additional pedestrian access points. And it connects the scenic overlooks that we talked about. There's over 4.2 miles of primitive trail proposed. These are narrower trails that show up as a red line on your, on your map, on the map. And those are used to connect the more environmentally sensitive areas of the park, like the bogs. From the herpetologist, we learned that salamanders travel to these bogs to spawn up to a mile away. So a great distance, well off site, off the park site. And he recommended that we are careful not to love the park to death. Those were the words that he used. He said, you have to be careful not to love it to death. By design, we took a more balanced approach to still provide that access, but not locate, you know, not locate the trails or, we try to have it off the beaten path, so to speak. So it's not in the busiest part of the park. And that would provide an element of protection. And the last trail type, blue line on the map, is the, is a one-mile-long paved ADA trail by the nature center. And this trail will provide one of the longest accessible trails in our area. And it's important to know that only walking trails are being proposed and no equestrian or mountain bike trails, despite the equestrian trails being the second-most popular activity at the public meeting. So we felt like that's important to mention. But here was, here's the logic. The park has some very unique environmental features that are trying to be preserved. Several important amphibians use the bogs for a spawning ground and that we're trying to protect. So horses and bikes, they add a higher level of activity in the park. So even, part of the design is to provide those wider buffers. And even though we provide the wider buffers and more primitive, you're using more primitive trails to connect these features, because we still want people to see them. We just want to provide more of a balanced approach. Horses and bikes tend to stray off the trail. And that would be detrimental to the park grounds. So there are other nature parks like this, like Stevens Creek Preserve in Mint Hill, if you've been there or heard of that. And Reedy Creek Park as well. These are all nature parks. And they do not, Stevens Creek doesn't have a question, neither Stevens Creek nor Reedy Creek have any type of equestrian use. And Stevens Creek does not allow bikes as well. Reedy Creek does allow bikes, but they're finding them to be problematic with their trail system between the walkers and the bikers. And we're not able, they're not able to really, but balance those groups successfully without a high level of staff management. It takes constant staff to be out there to really separate those uses and enforce those activities. So walking trails, this, this design kind of caters to the, the bigger group, the larger audience, because the walking trails appeal to everyone and most potential users. And Morrow Mountain State Park is also nearby, about 30 minutes away, and has a very good equestrian trail system. So a lot more mileage there, a lot easy, a lot easier to get to. And it's very difficult to manage equestrian trails and bike trails. They're harder to maintain and tend to damage the park ground. So I'm going to flip through a couple of other slides just to show you some examples of the character of the trails we're talking about. You can see some of the unpaved trails, like the main trail we're talking about on the left. This is from Rob Wallace Park, like a gravel trail. The primitive trail might be what we, something like we see in the center. You know, it's very narrow, a smaller trail. And then the accessible trail would be paved for wheelchair use, strollers, that sort of thing. The nature center that we talked about on the work, the northeast corner of the park. Here's some examples of nature centers that you see. This, this particular one is taken from Pilot Mountain. And you can see some of the exhibit space that's actually in the lobby where different groups can go in and learn about the mountain and that sort of thing. And you can see, if you look in that lower-left corner, you can see the Pilot Mountain knob and through the actual nature center in there. And that was a way to incorporate the views. Playgrounds and picnic shelters could have a nature theme to them. And we even looked at some of the potential ways to maintain the park, such as prescribed burns and thinning, native grasses and wildflowers and agriculture. These are ways to keep the maintenance down, help offset some of the maintenance costs, and make it more maintenance-friendly. And then these, next steps here. So our next step will be to give the public an opportunity to provide input on the proposed park that you've, on this plan that you've seen today and previewed. And then over the next couple of months, we will report back to you. And then over the next couple of months, we will report back to you and give you an update and let you know how things turned out. So we want to, first, I want to see if Jacob has anything that he'd like to add.
I don't think so. I think he, I think he hit it off pretty well.
And then open the floor for any, you know, questions that you might have or any discussion you would like to have.
And it may be a liability issue, I'm probably guessing, but you know, we have a lot of, in our school systems now, middle school, high school, we got, have shooting teams. Is that a possibility? Because now the teams, it, I think it's funded by parents, but they travel an hour, hour and a half to go to meets or to shoot. Is that, is that a possibility for this area?
And I assume we're talking like rifles versus archery?
They do shotguns, archeries, and rifles, all three.
Okay.
And it, and it's really getting, in our county, it's getting really popular. And our, and our high schools have teams. Union County has teams, Stanley County has teams. So it's a growing, it's a need that's going to be approaching pretty fast.
Certainly something we could explore further. I do know that there is a, an agreement, I believe, that's been filled out, or that the county is with, has an agreement with the property, with the previous landowner. I don't know all the details of that, but we would need to look at that just to make sure. Things like a conservation agreement or something of that nature. But that is something we could certainly look into.
That, that was going to be a question I was going to ask as well, and this might be a combination of you to answer it, but just for the benefit of the public, how did the county come to own this property?
So I could have some help from, from the back here, but to my knowledge, it was kind of transitioned to, from a hunting land, a hunting club owned parcel to a conservation trust. And then, as far as I know, and y'all probably know a little bit more, the county came along and, and worked it down to a suitable price to where we could get in, turn into a park. I know that was a super overview level, but.
Okay.
Yeah, and that certainly is, is my recollection as well, that it was, the, the land was placed in a conservation, and had conservation easements on it. And, and so I think what we're talking about here is certainly very sensitive to, to that. And, you know, and I, I can understand your explanation of the equestrian and bicycle uses, but I did attend the public input session that you referred to. And the, and as you said, that was the second most popular write-in, so those folks were there in, in large quantity, ve- very interested in that. So I, I think there has been some discussion of potential other areas for that. I'm not very knowledgeable about it, but it's not, I wanted to make sure that they understood that we're not ignoring their request, that we're looking for alternative areas where that type of activity might be more suitable. And I think the same may be true with what Commissioner Fur mentioned, that there might be other properties perhaps in conjunction with some of the property that we've acquired at Jackson Training School that, that may, may be suitable for that, that type of activity. I know, we haven't had any discussion about it at all, but I think it's certainly something worth consideration.
It sounds like what Commissioner Fur was referring to with the, you know, the shooting teams in our county and stuff, I, I understand they, that there is a need for space for that, potentially, as you had mentioned, Chairman Morris, you know, with the old, I lost the name now, Jackson Training School property, you know, while we're doing that training facility out there, some, could incorporate something in that area that would go well there. I did want to ask, so this is 614 acres. How big is Frankless Park? I know we just had discussed this, the ribbon cutting of the barn is, just to put in perspective of the size of this property.
I want to say it's around 230.
230, okay. Okay, yes, this is a significant sized property, but I'm happy to see that, you know, this would be more of a nature park. I think that's something that we don't, we do not have in, in our park system in Cabarrus County, so I, I like that. I think that'll, I think it'll be very popular and probably well-used. I would, I would ask this, too. The 614 acres, is all of it in the conservation easement? You know, all of the, the property or situation where we could preserve some for schools? I know we're always looking for land for schools and portion of that could be carved out for, for future.
Is there an actual designation? I don't think there is right now of a conservation easement on the property.
Okay.
That's just what the intended use was, along with the agricultural use of. We intend to continue to contract with those farmers to continue using that as productive agricultural as well, but in the future, if this board wants to, to do other uses, we would definitely use it. The only issues with that being so far out is there's no water and sewer that could support a school right now unless it was a on-site treatment plan or something like that.
And maybe in the future, you know, whenever.
If it grows, continues to go that way.
I mean, I certainly don't want to discount, you know, this park, like I said, I, I feel that it's, I feel like this is something that'll be very popular, but since we're always looking for land, you know, for schools and future growth, you know, as an idea to keep, to keep some of that, even if it was 100 acres, it would still have, you know, this park would still be largest park in Cabarrus County. So I'd like to throw that idea out there. And then as far as I understand the, you know, the equestrian, you know, impacts it could have on wildlife, you know, up there in the area and the bike, the use of bikes in the park, is there a way that we can incorporate some bike paths so it's not just, you know, you can ride your bike on any of the paths, but have, you know, somehow incorporate a few bike paths that could be used in that?
It's certainly something that can be studied, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we've debated that. I think the challenge that we identified is once you allow it on-site, they don't always follow the rules. You can have rotted signs, and so then they end up riding on the primitive trail system and upsetting the bogs and all of that, so just, it's harder to manage. I think it would require more staffing.
Now, I think the county attorney can add a little to the provisions of the purchase.
Yeah, yes. Excuse me. We actually bought the property from a, a group called the Conservation Fund that's located up in Maryland, and they were the owners of it prior to the county. And it was bought on a, a four-year payment plan. And there's not a formal conservation easement on the property, but the original contract between the county and, and the Conservation Fund did have some provisions in it concerning some conservation issues. But it's not a formal conservation easement, so.
Hopefully, we won't be a school site up in that part from the county. If the utilities start going that, in that direction, then potentially it could go pretty quickly. But right now, luckily, there's no utilities out there to help spur the residential.
I just have one question, and that would be, do we have any projections on the opening of this park? If you and the audience and for our sponsor.
I'm not aware of any, at this, at this time, y'all may be aware of any funding for any first phases, that sort of thing. So the first phase, the phase of the park, park would be subject to funding, of course. And I don't know if that's been determined yet, so.
I believe it shows up in the budget as a 2026 at the earliest, is when it would be recommended for funding.
It could really easily be 2027, 2028 before the park opens realistically.
It may depend on how it's phased out. If it's just a trail system first, that may be able to be sped along a little sooner with bringing in a nature center later down the road, but I think Rodney hit it on the head.
That's one of the challenges of the equestrian trails, too, because question, but it was very clearly communicated at the public meeting that they really like longer trail systems, like five or six miles. So that would require a lot of trail development fairly early on from a phasing standpoint to really have enough miles to even ride. Otherwise, there are more convenient areas like Marl Mountain that provide miles and miles of equestrian trails that can go to today. So anyway, just a thought.
Other questions or comments? Well, I'm really excited with the plan. I, I think that a county that is growing as rapidly as Cabarrus County is, for us to have the foresight to set aside property and preserve nature and some of these features and provide opportunities for, for children to visit there and learn about those things and to understand that everything is not concrete and asphalt and buildings and so forth is, is, is a huge asset for, for, for Cabarrus County. I think if we, time is of the essence. Every, every day that we let those things slip away from us is, is going to have a huge impact going forward. So I thi, I think that the county, those that came before me have done a good job with, with some of the other natural resources that we've preserved in the county and the, the things that they've done through the present use value program and some of the preservation easements that have been placed, put in place, which I think we're going to hear a little bit more about in a little bit, are, are things that, that, that people in the county will, will thank us for when we are moved on to the great beyond somewhere. So, so appreciate that presentation. Any, anything else, commissioners?
I'll save real quick. If y'all haven't had a chance to see the property, I know we've got some newer faces. We'd be happy to take you out there and ride around and show you it and maybe get the full picture from the ground level and, yeah, we could definitely set that up if anybody's interested.
Yeah, I will ask one more question about the little unusual-shaped piece of property that, that diesex in the middle. That's just a, a private ownership situation.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So we, I don't think there's been any talks about easements with them or anything, but just a, it is unusual shape. I don't know why it was partial like that.
It is an unusual shape, and are there residences or?
Just one.
One, one residence there?
Yes, sir.
They were at the meeting and they were very supportive of the park, and they have a, you know, very attractive home place there, so.
I think I remember talking to them there. Yeah, yeah, well, I'm sure this will be of benefit to them as well. Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District Program Year 2023 Annual Report, and we are happy to have Daniel McClellan with us for that report. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. We were, normally, we have presented annual report just to the county commissioners, the way we had presented, we sent a copy of it. Leon asked me if I wouldn't present this for y'all, so I will try to explain a little bit about, our board consists of three elected positions and two appointed positions. Currently, the board is Vicky Porter, Tommy Porter, Jeff Goforth, Eddie Moose, and Kevin May Jr. And our main highlights or, you know, main areas of work are plan reviews, environmental education, conservation easements, and cost share programs. So for this past year, we did about 80 reviews for municipalities in the county. And what we do is look through and see if there's any wetlands on and, and then the capabilities of the soil. So tell them if there's some limitations in a building, they're building, or whatever it may be, and what they may need to do to correct that. Also, the conservation easements, which we were talking about or heard about earlier, we have donated easements and we have funded by the state and federal easements, or state and federal programs to purchase development rights on prime and productive farmland soils. So we're trying to predict the best soils to grow crops for, for fu, for the future. District currently owns 360 acres of farmland easements, and we've spent about 1.7 million purchasing those through state and federal grants. In 2000, last year, 2023, we received a state grant for 275,000 from the state, but we have yet to get the remaining amount from the federal government for that, or from the federal USDA for that program. So we're, we're kind of in a hold until we get those funding from them to be able to complete that, that easement on 148 acres. District also works with like Land Trust, Davidson Land Trust, Three Rivers Land Trust, writing conservation plans for, for them to actually apply for the same funds that we're competing for. But we help them out with soils and conservation plans and, you know, talking to the farmer or whatever it may be. So they actually got 260 acres in Cabarrus County, so really, it don't matter to us how it's preserved, as long as it's preserved. One of the other areas we work in is education, environmental education. And in '23, we taught students, teachers, non-formal educators, and citizens of Cabarrus County through 7,472 individual education experiences, reaching 24 schools in the county. Our conservation contest, we reached 2,700 students in 12 schools. So we have a poster essay and a speech contest that we put on every year. And we got, and a, yeah, a poster contest, and we had 12 schools on that. And then we also participate in like citizen sites type things where you get the general public to report on things they may have seen or, you know, and identifying them. So identifying plants, animals, whatever it may be. The big sweep, we, we do that usually in the fall, and the City Nature Challenge. In our contests, the ones I just spoke about, we had 2,700 students, and we also had, we have Envirathon team for older kids. Out of our 32 dis, let's see, we had 12, we had, at least, we had five, we had eight teams and five went to the state competition. So we did really well. None of them won at the state, but at least they participated and we had, no, we had 14 Envirathon teams. Anyway, Mount Pleasant, Jamfries, Winkler, and five high schools, Cannon and Northwest. So we, we keep trying to, you know, promote that for the older kids so that they can go into environmental competition, but we are competing with other environmental-type competitions. As far as cost share programs, we received funding from the Division of Soil and Water to implement best management practices on farms. And also urban things, we have a community cost share program, too, so we can do urban, but it all has to improve water quality. And we have a, another program, the AgRat, AgRat program, where we actually try to quantity, we, we, we try to improve the quantity that these people have, like ponds or, or cisterns or things like that. One thing that we had knew this year that we were happy with was we, we had a, the state general assembly gave the Division of Soil and Water and other groups, but we got a part of, it's called the strap program. It's for stream removal blockages and streams. And we had, we've got a list of streams with blockages, and this prevents flooding and erosion. You know, these, these big blockages, all this water running off from town is, you know, a lot of times will cause a, a bad flood. And we had, we received $258,000 to remove streams, and we did it on, we, we've, we've completed one on Coldwater Creek. We have one on Dutch Buffalo Creek that is in contract, and we also have one on Cottle Creek that's in contract. So we hoping, we're hoping probably this winter to get the two on Cottle and Dutch Buffalo to remove the debris out of that. So anyway, I would like to thank the commissioners and county management for continuing to support us. county management for continuing to support us. And if you got any questions, I'll be willing to answer.
Daniel, you might want to mention about a backlog of people wanting to do easements, conservation easements, and and a little bit about that. And I'll also mention the the stream restoration project that they're doing. If you, there's pictures here, I don't know why we didn't show them. But anyway, of a stream or a little creek prior to it being cleaned with all the debris and logs and stuff like that. And then, of course, they go in there and get it all cleaned up so the water can flow like it's supposed to. But but anyway, you know, it's, we got a wonderful soil and water department and Daniel and Tammy over there and the board that really gets into this. But I know you and I talked, and you said you had ten or maybe more people that are wanting to have easements.
Yeah, we we have a, and there's all kinds of caps on how much you can spend on these easements. So that's what we have to play with as far as per applicant applicant. But right now, we probably have, I think, ten that's backlogged. And and people call all the time, you know, interested in the conservation easements on their farm. Some people, it takes a little while to talk to them, make sure they make the right choice. But yeah, we've got a backlog, so it's gonna take a little while to to get to all of them.
Whenever you mention this backlog of, you know, ten or so applicants, what's the timeline, would you say, on getting those? I I'm assuming that you that they're ranked?
Yes, we rank them every.
So then maybe a couple of years or something get through. I guess it all depends on the size and the.
Yeah, it's the funding constraints as far as, you know, an easement that the way we have went with easements with the state and federal funding, it sometimes takes three years just to do one, three or four years. So we can apply usually for two a year with the funding that we have from from the back taxes, you know, and and we try to budget what we can do. So usually two a year.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, yeah.
Thank you. And so if you have people that want to donate preservation easements, there's probably no backlog on those, right?
No, we, some people do want to donate. And and we've worked with with some of those. Some people back out before they, you know, we tell them all the the ins and outs. And but yeah, you could, we could, we could take a donated easement anytime.
Yeah. And could could you explain for the benefit of people listening that that might might be interested, exactly what does that mean? If I have a farm and I want to donate a conservation easement for the reasons that we just discussed about St. Stephen's Park, that that I want to make sure that agriculture is preserved and nature is preserved? And, you know, what what would I be, what kind of restrictions would I be agreeing to?
So, and Rich could probably talk about this too, but you've got all these develop, or you've got all these rights to your property, mineral, water, you know. So what you're doing with an easement is you're selling your development rights to the property. And that prevents anybody from being able to build a house or or shopping center or anything on that property. It'll put a restriction on the deed as far as being able to develop that. Now, they can set aside places on the farm that they may want to build a house later on. But they have to do that upfront.
Yeah. So if I had a five hundred acre farm, I could either sell an easement if we had funding available, or I could donate it. And I could say, I will, you know, I want a conservation easement on all of this property except an acre over here for my son to build a house, and an acre over here for my daughter to build a house. You still have that flexibility if you do it upfront, right?
Yes, upfront.
Yeah. So what are, if if I sold a conservation easement to the entire five hundred acres, I said, I want this all to be preserved. I never want there to be a housing development there. Then what are the things that I couldn't do for the rest of my life on that property? I could still farm and I could still, what were some of the things I couldn't do?
You could, well, you couldn't divide it, for instance.
Okay.
You wouldn't be able to divide it.
I'd have to, I could sell it, but I'd sell it all in one big tract.
Yes. And there's different easements, there's different degrees of an easement. So, you know, there's, some may allow you to be able to divide it. Most don't though, that are funded through state or federal money are usually, they want to keep it as a whole. And so that these farmers have a a base of what they are, you know, they have a base acreage that they can farm. So, yeah, it gets into a lot of different aspects of of an easement.
So how does that, if if I sold a conservation easement or or donated it, how would that impact my property taxes? Because I'm already probably getting a discount for the present use value program because I'm using it for agricultural purposes. Does anything change?
What we've, what we've understood so far is it normally stays. Yeah.
It's a good question. So the easement itself could potentially affect the market value of your property? So once that easement ends in place?
It's less valuable because a developer wouldn't want it.
That's correct. And depending on the easement and the restrictions that are, there's there's any number of things that can be a restriction there, and that would affect potentially the the market value of the property from assessments table.
So potentially, I could save money on my property taxes if that development value went away with the sale of that easement. Is that a true statement?
Yes, sir. So if you lowered the value of your property in that market value standpoint, that's gonna affect your tax bill.
Right. Yeah, which leads to, you're gonna talk to us a lot about property value in a bit. But yeah, well, I mean, I, those are things that that I think people are interested to know about it. So once, once again, I think it's a great program for a for a rapid growing county. And we appreciate what what you folks do. Other questions or comments for Daniel?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, item three point three from Infrastructure and Asset Management, Cabarrus County Behavioral Health Center Project. And we're happy to have updates from Kyle and Rodney.
So I'm gonna start this one, and then I've got a couple of virtual friends, Jason Harris from Messer and Kevin Turner from Good Experience. I'm gonna cover the programming, so what happens inside of the building. There's a slight change to that that we want to put before you and make sure that you're supportive of. And then Jason will cover the milestones and the timeline for the construction. So in terms of what happens in the building, I want to refresh your memory on what the prior presentation contained. So it had thirty-two chairs for adults and children, so sixteen each, for behavioral health urgent care. So if you come in and you're having an urgent care, behavioral health crisis, you can get the support you need within those first twenty-three hours. And then it also had a psychiatric residential treatment facility for for child and adolescent populations, which is a higher level of care, where those children typically can stay there upwards of six months to a year. And then it had twenty beds for adults with substance use disorder, behavioral health crisis, per facility-based crisis, which is seven to fourteen days. So that's the original plan. And so I'll give you an example using a child. So if you're a sixteen year old and you come into the behavioral health urgent care, in the previous version, you would have been seen. And if it was determined that you needed facility-based crisis care, which again, it's about a seven to fourteen day stabilization period, you would have had to have been transferred out of the facility to another provider, which we don't have one in Cabarrus County. And then if it was determined after that seven to fourteen days that you needed psychiatric residential treatment, you would have been been transferred back to Cabarrus County to go into that treatment level of care. So what we are proposing in terms of the programming is to shift this primarily to a child and adolescent facility. And what that would do is take those twenty adult facility-based crisis beds and eliminate them and replace them with sixteen facility-based crisis beds for children and adolescents. So if you're a child coming into the facility, you could go from the urgent care to the facility-based crisis to the PRTF without having to transfer out of the facility. If you're an adult, you would come in to the urgent care, which would still be there. And then you would have to transfer out for higher levels of care, which we already have an adult facility-based crisis in the county, which is Daymark, which they would be able to transfer there or to another provider based on their needs. So that's the first step in this, is we wanted to share that with you. We think it is a more appropriate model than than the previous version. And we've stressed all along, this is a very flexible process. And so this could change next year, it could change two years from now. But as of today, this is what we think is the approach to meeting the needs of the community. We shared this with the Mental Health Advisory Board this morning, and they were supportive of it. And so we want to just make sure that you are good with that because obviously, we're going from twenty beds to sixteen beds. So technically, we're losing four beds, but we think it's worth it. So any comments on that when we switch gears?
Rodney, the flexibility of the structure itself, if for some reason you want to ship two years from now or three years from now?
Yeah, it's being designed to the highest standard. So you could do inpatient hospitalization in this facility if you needed to.
I'm in favor of it, especially when it has to deal with the juveniles. You already have enough on your plate when you're dealing with that, instead of having to worry about them being transferred somewhere outside of the county. So if we can keep them here in the county, that's a big piece of mind for the parent that's involved. So I support.
And you said, and I reminded me, we had a child, actually, the last few days, that is currently in a hospital awaiting placement in a PRTF that is being sent to, I believe it was Arkansas, because that's where a bed was available. So.
So as far as design of the facility, if we go in this direction, which I don't have a problem with, but if we want to transition, as Mike said, you know, in a few years or something, the way the facility is designed, it would not affect?
Correct. We would be able to switch to an adult population or a different need. So we could do inpatient for the adolescent population if we could, that's what's the idea.
Sounds good.
Well, I'm very much in in favor of what you've described. I think it's a very positive change. Also, I had a conversation with with folks from Daymark this morning at our Mental Health Advisory Board meeting. They thought it was a good plan as well, and referred to to some of what they are currently offering in the county, and talked a little bit about about the population that 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 they are serving. I agree with what Commissioner Workman said. You know, I've I've heard from too many parents who have been in that situation and have had to 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 see their very ill child loaded into a vehicle and transported to Raleigh, other places as well. So yeah, I think I think it's a a big plus. I think it's a smart thing to do.
So before switching over to Jason, there's one more concept that has come up. And this is not far enough along that we're looking for your approval, but we just want to plant the seed is across the state, there's a significant issue with dealing with children in in social service care in terms of between placements, or if they are, for example, awaiting placement. So using the hospital example, you may have a child that is currently sitting in an emergency department that is ready to be discharged, but they can't be discharged until they have a place to go. And so they may sit there for an additional two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, in a place that is not appropriate for their care. And so one of the ideas here is to add a four-bed unit that would be specifically for that purpose. And so the children, rather than sitting in the ED, or when they're between placements, rather than sitting in, sometimes they're in our social service building, they would have an appropriate place to stay with the appropriate level of care. This would require a county contribution to to operate it. We think that's in the ballpark of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. It also would be a capital cost because we would have to add additional square footage to the building. And so again, we're not far enough along that we have those, that data for you. But just something to put out there is something we'll bring back to you in a future meeting for consideration. Any questions on that?
You said that would not be a county cost to operate.
It would be.
It would be a county cost to operate it as well as the capital cost.
Correct.
But currently, if they are in our Human Services Department, we're paying staff hours and so forth for somebody to care. So that total amount would not be an additional cost.
So currently, if there's a child in the emergency room and they're awaiting placement, and you say that sometimes they have to wait weeks, so now who pays the bill whenever?
Currently, it would be the hospital.
That they're not happy about.
I'm sure they're not.
And it also takes up one of their bits.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure they're not happy about that. Just curious, who pays the bill on that?
Yeah, sure.
So that covers the programmatic piece. And so now I'm gonna turn it over to Jason, where he's gonna cover the milestones for the construction of this project. So hopefully he can.
Yeah, can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. I'm gonna share my screen. I've got a milestone schedule that we have put together, so I'm gonna share that. Sorry if I sound a little wonky. I'm fighting a bit of a illness right now. So I I created a a milestone view schedule for presentation to this group today. And and just just to give an overview of where things stand and and where we're heading for this project. So you can see rolled up at the bottom, we've got quite a few activities built in for design permitting, procurement, pricing, and construction. But for y'all's benefit and for the sake of time for everyone this evening, I've I've rolled those all up into milestones above. And so these are being driven by activities down here in our overall schedule. And if I showed you the full version of that, it's more like eight pages. But I wanted to give a a main view of what this is. So we're currently in design through SD and and working towards the the DD portion of the design. And Kevin may speak on that a little bit more. But from a construction perspective, there's a couple of things that we're looking to accomplish. So one is an early procurement package. I'm sure you, your team or the group here has heard about the delays and ability for us to get the equipment needed to effectively turn over a building to the county. Many of the other projects, it sounds like talking to Kyle or having to go through similar efforts. So there are equipment pieces in this building, air handlers, generators, electrical equipment, and more. I won't bore you with all the details, but some some items that are gonna require early procurement. And that's a function of the lead times in the market. The generators and electrical equipment in particular are pushing upwards of sixty weeks. And that's a really long time when you think about a building that is gonna take about a year and a half, a little bit more than that for us to build. So that's the first thing you see here on the list. We've got milestones for when we expect to get notices to proceed from this group for the the different segments of the work, first of which being an early site package. And that's in an effort to make sure we're getting onsite as early as we can and driving that site work and site readiness for the main building itself. You can see that next. That's the main building notice to proceed. So that's the bulk of the cost of the project, everything from structure through completion. We have about four months' worth of structure, followed by four months of envelope work. So there's a significant burden there on the front side. I've plugged in milestones for roof dry-in and exterior dry-in. Those are pretty critical to the overall finishes, being able to start within the facility. There's a lot of activity that we flat out can't do until these milestones are hit. We've got a lot of time plugged in for finishes. This is a complex project, high-end finishes. We call it hospital light is what we've been referring to it as. It's not a full-blown hospital facility, but it's pretty darn close to that. So we've got a significant swath of time for finishes. And then, once we're ready to start on those exterior finishes, you can see we've plugged in some durations for hardscapes and landscaping, and then left on time at the end for not only final inspections as required by the county, punch lists, and then also all the THEC requirement inspections at the end of the the project. So significant amount of effort here at the end, and and we've we've plugged in time for that, as well as the user group move-in and activation. I know the county will work through that with us as we as we get towards the final completion of the project, similar to what we've done for the courthouse project, with first patient anticipated timeframe of April first of two thousand twenty-six. So that's the thirty-thousand foot view of where we stand today. Any questions on that? Any questions on that?
Jason, is there any way you could compress that construction period down to, from 18 months to maybe 10 months?
Commissioner Morris, I would like to tell you yes, but I think our goal here is to make sure we're building a schedule that not only can we meet, but provides the high-quality product we know the county desires.
Thank you, sir. You can't say I didn't ask.
Fair enough.
He answered it very diplomatically.
He did, yes. He does an excellent job. Questions, gentlemen?
I was just going to add to that point, and we'll see if Kevin wants to add anything from the design side, is we do and will try to narrow the timeline as much as possible so there may be opportunities. For example, on the calendar, you'll see 60 to 90 days for permitting. You know, if we could work with our municipal partner on that to try to expedite that process, maybe you gain some time back there, so we will try to streamline it where possible. Kevin, anything you want to add from the design side?
We're going to continue to move as quickly as we can. So far, the process has been very smooth, and so we anticipate that continuing. The biggest thing we're working with Jason and his team on is making sure that we have a design schedule that yields what they need to do this early procurement, so we can get everything we need, and also trying to manage the difficult process of getting all the permitting. We have a lot of entities we have to go through here, and so we're going to be working hard to issue early packages and try and be out in front of that process as much as possible, which is, we studied it, it's actually more valuable to do that than it is to try to shorten the design process. So we're going to hit a lot of milestones along the way to try and make sure the county and messer have what they need when they need it.
So does the medical nature of this project require additional permits from state entities and so forth?
Correct, yes.
Which we haven't had a lot of success with them being very expedient in the past, I don't think.
We will do the best we can.
Questions for Kevin? Or Rodney? I would just like to say, I like the approach. I like the changes you have talked about. I like the addition of the aspect for the foster children situation. I think we're going to improve the situation for a lot of different folks as this project goes forward. So thank you for what your work has done on it. Now Kyle's going to tell us how easy it's going to be.
No, sir. I've had all the experts tell you everything.
Great. Okay, anything else on that item? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we move now to item 3.4 from Tax Administration, Presentation of Schedule of Values. Welcome, David Thrift.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here this afternoon to present for your review the 2024 Schedule of Values Standards and Rules for Use in our 2024 Revaluation Project. North Carolina 105317 instructs this Schedule of Values process. Schedule of Values is our appraisal manual that we develop and our appraisers utilize during the revaluation process. It establishes all the modeling, sets the base rates and the adjustments that we use to arrive at fair market value for all the properties in the county as of the effective date of the evaluation, which is January 1st of 2024, our next revaluation. Some portions of this are textbook-like, explaining in narrative form kind of the basics of mass appraisal, the methodology that we use to do this project. The ultimate goal of this manual is to be sufficiently broad enough to, in scope, to permit reasonable adjustments to arrive at market value, but yet narrow enough to ensure that we're, have a uniform and equity across the county. The manual itself is about a product of about a year to year and a half of work that we put in analyzing the market, analyzing market data and tracking activity that's taken place to establish this process. By statute, it must be developed, reviewed, and adopted, including a 30-day challenge period to the Property Tax Commission prior to January 1st of the revaluation year. I've proposed a schedule, Lauren, I don't know if you can pull up that. So I proposed a schedule that's in congruence with 105317 that hits all the points that we need to go through in this process. Tonight being the initial presentation of the schedule makes it available to the public and to the commissioners. We plan to hold a public hearing at your regular meeting on the 18th, if the public has comment they wish to provide. I'll then ask you to adopt the schedule at your next work session in October. That adoption period will, the point of adoption will open a period of a month in which we will advertise each week that the schedule has been adopted, and if there is desire to appeal any portion of that, that appeal can take place to the Property Tax Commission. And if there is no appeal at the end of that month, November 1st, that schedule becomes duly adopted. And final, and we use that to finalize the revaluation process. I'm sorry, can you, and just a couple more till you get to the, one more, and then we'll get to the page. Yeah. So certainly, as you can see here, the schedule is an expansive document over 300 pages long, certainly not something we want to delve into the details in this environment. It'll be available online on our county website, it is now. There'll also be a copy in our tax revaluation department, if anyone wants to come in and review that on paper and doesn't have access online. We're always there to answer questions, go through any length of detail and specifics anybody has for questions or concerns. I do want to point out a few things this evening, just to give you a feel for the document. Shown here is the table of comments. It shows table of contents. There's 13 total chapters. 12 are part of the market value section of this process, and then one chapter labeled 4A here represents our present use value section. So if you go to the next page, and one chapter I want to touch on is Chapter 4, title of Land Appraisal Market Value. This holds all the adjustments and formulas that we use in our land models to identify how the characteristics of individual properties affect valuation. So we establish base rates for each neighborhood using market data, and then adjust those base rates for each parcel based on the specific characteristics of it. So as you see on the screen here, or in your handouts, Page 426 is an example of some of the adjustments that are laid out for different road types on rural property. So certainly, this is just one characteristic that's adjusted for, but it gives you an example of the type of modeling that we use to establish value based on each individual characteristic of a property. If you go to the next page line. So the next page gets into Chapter 11 of our Schedule of Values. This chapter identifies the specifications for all the improvements in the county. Here you'll find the table of base rates for all the different types of improvements that we have. That starts on Page 11-20. You'll see here the top line, single-family residential base rate established at $126 a square foot. If you go to the next page. So also within this chapter, you find the tables and formulas that are used to adjust those base rates based on the characteristics of each property. And this page is an example here of how the points adjustments relative to each structural element of a construction affects the overall value of the property. This chapter also holds all the pricing schemes and adjustments for any outbuildings, extra features, miscellaneous improvements that may be not part of the main structure, but still considered improvements to the real estate. The next is a page from the Chapter 4A that I mentioned, the present use value schedule. This addresses the valuation of those properties that qualify for assessment through the agricultural, forestry, and horticultural programs, deferment programs. So these values are derived from the Department of Revenue. They're based on rental income studies and analysis of property that's in production. So Page 4A2 here shows an example of how we have rent classifications and values for each different type of property, each classification of property and how it's being used. In the present use value section, these numbers are very similar to the 2020 schedule that we had. There is some slight adjustment, upward adjustment in the forestry numbers, but everything else is very similar. So next month's work session, when I request that you, through the adoption of this schedule, we'll request that you adopt the schedule in two separate parts, one being that 12 chapters of market value, and the second being the present use value section. This will allow us, if there is any appeal to either schedule, we can continue work on the, using the others as we move towards the revaluation date. So just in closing, once again, the ultimate purpose of the Schedule of Values is to provide uniformity, consistency, and equity in our assessment as we strive to value each property at its true market value on January 1st, 2024. And we are, in our office, always available to answer any questions or any concerns our taxpayers may have. They can come in and see us, they can call, we can help in any way we can, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have tonight.
Can you go over the appeal process? So what's the timeframe looks like? What's it look like by the time somebody gets their notice?
Sure.
And how long do they have to appeal? And when would you like that to happen versus when is it too late?
Great question. So at the end of this Schedule of Values adoption, and when it's final, we'll work to finish the project and assign values. We'll send, our plan currently is to send notices out towards the first part of February. Everybody in the county will receive that revaluation notice, and with it will be instructions on how to start that appeal process. And that is the most important part of this process, is once we determine that valuation, having the opportunity to hear from our taxpayers and address any concerns that they have and educate them on the process of newbies. At the point that that notice goes out, starts that informal appeal process, you can return that form, it's a, it is an appeal form that we send the notice on, so you can return that form. There's online capability to file an appeal online. You could certainly just call or come see us. We like to take that opportunity from February when we send notices out through the end of May, April, first part of May is when our Board of Equalization and Review sits. That is our local board that hears these more formal appeals. If we cannot resolve an issue under the informal process, the taxpayer then has a next step to go to a more formal level at our Board of Equalization Review, and that begins in the May timeframe, and they'll have an opportunity to present then. Beyond that, you have the Property Tax Commission and the court systems, but certainly, our desire is to handle as much as possible at the informal level, because that's our opportunity to talk to the taxpayers.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there, that's how you appeal your valuation. Once you receive your new value, but you also have an opportunity to appeal this process. If you read this manual and someone does not agree with the methodology and the facts and the figures, then they have an opportunity to appeal that as well?
That's correct. So this is available now, as of tonight, it's on the website, and it's available in our office tomorrow morning. It's open for review until you adopt it next month, and at the point when you adopt it, it has another 30-day period in which it can be appealed if people have concerns and questions.
Yeah. And I will say that I have picked through this and tried to find a problem, something I could question you about.
Thank you.
But I haven't been able to come up with anything. I mean, all the questions that I've asked, as far as you get the information from the register of deeds about every piece of property.
Sure.
That is sold in the county, you get the information from real estate agents and those entities about what they're selling. I mean, there's, it's a lot more involved than maybe even I might have imagined, and I've gone through the process several times. But I think that there are probably members of the public, people out there that rightfully don't get into this level of detail, that kind of feel like you appraise property because somebody rides down the street, looks out the car window and says, "It looks to me like that's worth X, and it looks to me like that's worth Y." And that's not the case at all. And you do visual inspections, aerial photographs, on-premise live view. I mean, it's a pretty exhaustive process to try to come up with. So theoretically, and I said to you when we talked the other day, I wouldn't sell my house for the tax value you've got on it. I would, I would want a lot more than that. But at the end of this process, it's supposed to be what a willing seller and a willing buyer would agree upon. And of course, that changes the following day.
Sure.
After you, you know, it either goes up or down, it could go either way. It's a, it's a very, a very scientific process based on facts and figures. And the thing that I think other also that sometimes, when you receive that revaluation notice, the 1st of February, I believe you said.
Yes.
That doesn't, that doesn't have anything to do with what your taxes are going to be.
That's great. It's just a valuation of your property at that point.
The valuation of your property. When this board approves a budget and a tax rate, then the months after that, prior to July the 1st, that's what determines what the tax, the actual tax bill will be.
That's correct.
And so I think you have said to me in the past that a lot of people, during that appeal process period from February to May or April, they don't pay that much attention to it. It's only when they get that actual tax bill in July or August, that's when they question their value.
And at that point, it's too late to question your valuation.
Right. Yeah, so I think it's good for us to educate people. If you have any concerns about your value, that's the time to express it, is between February and late April. And don't wait till you get the bill, because then it's too late.
Right. And I will say you make an excellent point on the, back to what this manual does. Instead of an appraiser looking at a property and determining value, we do look at that property, and they look at, based on this manual, which identifies what to look at, what characteristics to look at. And then we've built into this manual, based on the market, how all those things affect the market value. So it doesn't, it shouldn't matter which appraiser comes by your property and takes a look. It's not necessarily their opinion at the time. It's identification of the property and how we've built it in the manual to establish that equity and assessment.
Yeah, so it would be, if you have this many square feet, there's this much value, if you have wood siding, you get this much, if you have brick siding, you get this much.
That's correct.
If you have a slate roof, it's going to be more than a composition.
Every characteristic of property that we've determined affect that market value is calculated within this manual.
Right. Yeah, so no, if you hired a professional appraiser to come out and appraise your property, which you would have to do if you were selling it and you were going to get financing, their process is probably not quite as detailed as this. Would that be fair to say?
That's fair to say. They certainly look at very similar aspects, but they take a different approach to establishing that value. So they would look at the subject property, identify all those same pieces that we look at, but then they would find sales that have taken place, hopefully good comparables, and they would adjust those back to the subject. We take a little different approach, studying the market as a whole and developing how those modeling aspects change value, the goal being, on January 1st, 2024, to get to the same value, that market value that a fee appraiser would do.
Right. Okay, and other questions?
And I know we talked in our individual meetings, and you did brush on it in here. I just wanted to make sure it's very clear that in that appeal window, you
I just wanted to make sure it's, it's very clear that in that appeal window, you or your department, you're willing to meet with any taxpayer that comes in to show them exactly how you came up via the, the formulas in the book of their valuation of their property.
Yes, sir. So we're, we're willing to meet now to show how we've developed this process, but at the point when those notifications go out of, of what the value is, that's a great time to, to have that discussion and that education process of what we've identified.
And of course, I, I think great care is taken not to make any mistakes, but that was one of the questions I asked. I said, so give me an example of a mistake that could occur. And I'm sure, I mean, we all try not to make mistakes, but we fail most of the time, certainly I do. And, and the, the answer, one of the answers I got was, well, if, let's say if it were a substantial piece of property, maybe a portion of the property was in a floodplain that couldn't be built on and it wasn't clearly identified, that would be an example.
Sure.
Yeah. Of something that could, could be reexamined and take a look at.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it'd be similar items on residences and other structures, that sort of thing.
Exactly right. And we're, we're doing a valuation of, of every property in the county as of one date. That's a lot of property that we try to identify those characteristics, but the appeal process gives us the opportunity to, if we've missed something, to hear from the taxpayers about how to correct that, that adjustment.
So now, since there's been discussion about the appeals, I know, so my question's not about appealing this mechanism of.
Right.
How you're reaching property values, but whenever the notices go out, in your history and recollection, how many appeals do we receive?
That's a good question and it changes every revaluation.
Is it like thousands, tens of thousands, hundreds?
Yes, so the industry standard, when I started in this, this industry, I was told to expect on a revaluation, five to 10% of, of all properties to, to have some reaction. We have never historically seen that in my tenure here at Cabarrus County. Typically, we're more in the two to 4% range of, of response in that informal review. Once we get to the higher levels, those numbers drop dramatically. So we, we do a lot of outreach. We try to make contact with our taxpayers to get the best information. I think we do a good job, but there's still a, a good volume of appeals that come in which provide us that opportunity. I would say, you know, in this revaluation, we're going to see some, some significant impact. We expect to hear back from our taxpayers and we'll, I don't have a good number because it's different every time.
Okay. And so, so as I said, I understand that, you know, what we're discussing tonight is just the mechanism in which.
Right.
You're achieving property values, but you're along the way in this process, how much would you estimate property values are increasing with this revaluation?
So I, I don't have a number at this point for that either. I can say that across the board, we're seeing since 2020, certainly there's been a lot of activity in the real estate market and there's been a lot of appreciation in the real estate market. So I would say at this point, I would be comfortable saying there's going to be significant impacts, but in terms of numbers, I, I, we're not far enough along in the process for me to give you accurate numbers at that point.
Okay. Is there an area of the county that is intended to increase more value than other areas of the county?
I don't know that so much geographically. There's been appreciation across the board, just in general.
Right.
From a real estate market standpoint. I will say that the residential market has been, seemed to be a little stronger than changes that we've seen in commercial and industrial markets, but it's, from a geographic standpoint, there's been appreciation across the board in the county.
Okay. But not one area in particular that is maybe increasing more than others or?
I would say there's areas with more growth than others, but in terms of appreciation of value, that's not necessarily the same, same equation.
Okay. All right. And so, so we don't have, so I just want to ask you, and so we don't have any kind of preliminary number of what we're thinking that this may be headed into?
I'm not sure it would be appropriate to try to give you numbers at this point on what the impact's going to be. There's still a long way to go between now and January first.
But we're going to say that it's probably significant.
It's going to be significant. Compared to previous revows, there's going to be more change than we've seen in the past.
Okay.
And I can understand why David wouldn't be, wouldn't be, want to be on the hook for that, making that guess of that prediction, but I'll make one.
Hey, I have to ask.
I think, I think I recently read that in Mecklenburg County, which just completed their reval year this past year, I think residential was 40% average, somewhere in that vicinity, and I heard some other figures much higher than that. I don't, I don't think ours will be as high as Mecklenburg's, but based on properties that I have observed that have sold in the last 12 months, particularly ones that I was familiar with what they sold for two years ago.
Yeah.
It, it has been substantial. So I, yeah, I would not be surprised if we don't end up around, between 30 to 35%. And I, I would rather guess high than guess low, but, but people are going to be surprised when they get their revaluation notices, I think.
Well, I, I certainly have no doubt that values have increased around the county. I mean, anybody, anybody with a brain is aware of, you know, the growth and demand for the property and property values have increased.
Yeah.
You know, I guess what the big decision will be is whenever it's our turn to, to decide on a tax rate, that's, that's where the, the big decisions and conversations will take place.
That, that is correct. So I guess my point would be that getting a high value on your property is not necessarily a negative thing. It means you have built a lot of equity, but the factor is going to be, going to be the, the, the tax rate. I've also hear a lot of discussion about the, the inventory of real estate available for sale. I hear that from realtors and, and people that are looking for homes, and I think it's probably a, a very low, low rate. I, I've heard a lot of people say they have difficulty finding a house when they're, when that, that, when they want to buy because there aren't as many on the market. And I think some of the real estate organizations have some, I mean, they keep facts and figures and records of that comparative times, and I think the inventory is at one of its lowest points right now. So that, the less you have, the more valuable what you do have is. So that certainly has had an impact.
Steve, I gotta add something to it. I'm on page 290 to 320. I'm just kidding. But anyway, no, I think the willingness to sit.
You've memorized it.
Yeah.
Correct.
The willingness just to sit and explain to people the process, like, you know, you kind of did with us, is, is very important. I think they would understand that, you know, there's going to get a fair market value and, and just, just being willing to, to sit and explain it to people goes, goes a long way.
Yeah.
And I'm proud of that. So thank you.
Now, I was going to go off that and thank you, David, for your transparency. I mean, you sat with all of us, you're willing to sit with everybody else, it doesn't get any more transparent than that, and that's the best that we can shoot for when it comes to this, so thank you.
I'll, I'll have to say, I agree with that too. You know, I, I even witnessed you in front of the office out before the doorway greeting people and, and talking to the taxpayers. So that is very important and thank you for that and thank you for giving me the hard copy. I'm still in the process of reading.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I did want to make one comment. So the, and I don't know why my microphone is so strange today. The Taxpayer Transparency Act is working its way through Raleigh right now. It's passed the Senate. I believe it's currently in the House. It's been revised several times. So the original version of it had some requirements in there to show projected tax bills, tax revenues, using the current tax rate. That has been struck from the bill, but it does require some alterations to the notice the taxpayers would get that would show them their prior revaluation value, their, their new revaluation value, the percent change, and then there's a couple other elements in there. So just making you aware of that, the tax bill, assuming that passes, will be slightly different when they send out notices in February.
How's that going to affect us logistically, software wise and so forth? Because it's, if they do it the way they do, most things they'll wait till the last minute to let you know about it.
Yes, sir. And as Rodney said, as it's currently constructed, you know, we have the, the capability within our system to identify what's being asked of us to put on the notice. It's just a matter of, of setting up the, the job to do that. I think logistically, we'll be able to handle that, it's just a matter of finalizing what that is going to be in time to do so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to discussion items for action. 4.1 from Active Living in Parks Senior Center American Rescue Plan Act Award. We're happy to have Ian Sweeney with us for that item. And before we start on that, since we've already had one group from Active Living in Parks up, I want to congratulate all of you on the excellent job that you did on the ribbon cutting for the new barn at Frankless Park. The whole crew was out in force and I think people really enjoyed the event and were excited to get to see the new facility. So thank you. Please, Ian, take that back to Londa who's back there and Jacob and.
Do you hear him?
And, and all the rest of, the rest of the folks that are, that are not here. But really, it was, it was nice and I think people really felt welcomed and a lot of staff around in those blue shirts and, and, and they got good food to eat and it was just a great event. So I'm sorry, now proceed.
Go for it. Thank you. Thanks for being there. Hopefully you got some food and didn't get rained on like I did waiting underneath the little awning. What I've got's maybe slightly more complicated than house revaluations. Just kidding. But as a new homeowner, I feel like I just went to a very important class. So Senior Center American Rescue Plan Act, we were awarded $9,504 for both Mount Pleasant and Concord Senior Center. This money needs to be spent by September of 2024. So we're just requesting that we have a budget amendment so that we can utilize this money. And then we, it is a reimbursement, so there is no county match on that. And it's going to be used for some free programs, supplies, marketing outreach and equipment just to support operations essentially at Mount Pleasant and Concord Senior Center. So again, no county match, a total of $19,008. Any questions?
Questions for Ian?
I don't have any questions about this. It was pretty straightforward, but when talking about the barn, I had several people ask me about renting the barn and like, what's the fees? Do you know that off the top of your head, just out of curiosity?
There's a, so you can rent different shelters on each side, the lower level, the upper level, I believe, and it's all day regardless of how you, you break it up. You can rent the barn in its entirety. I know, I, I don't. You got those numbers off the top of your head?
Roughly $300 for that rental timeframe for the upper or for the lower, enclosed, enclosed section, this.
Okay.
Climate controlled.
For the day?
Yes.
Okay. And that's just for one of the spaces?
That's true.
That's 300?
Yes.
Around 300? Okay. I think, Lundy, you're, you're.
I don't remember what the shares are.
We adjusted the fees for the new building, so that the scheduled fees, it should be. Okay. That was going to be my question if the fees had changed. Okay. Just curious, I had a lot of people asking me.
That is incredibly reasonable.
Yes.
That cannot be matched at any other event facility in the county, I'm quite sure. I did have one question about this, and of course, I know that, that American Rescue Plan Act is a kind of a unique one-time thing. I hope it's a one-time thing. I don't ever want to go there again, but I know that, that we do have some other grants and, and things. Since we are getting ready to add a third active living center, senior slash senior center, do those grant, I mean, does that make us eligible for more grants or do we have to split these up more ways?
So we, every year, you know, we apply for home and community care block grant funding and then that committee decides what we have to use for senior center operations, which we have split between Concord and Mount Pleasant. Here recently, especially with the plans to open Mount Pleasant and Virginia Foil with the Active Living Center and Library, most of that has been done at, at Concord Senior Center. When we open a third, when Mount Pleasant opens and then Afton opens, it would be up to that committee if we get a bigger chunk of that funding to maybe, and it, it doesn't, it's not set in stone, so once, maybe it's a one-off request to where, hey, this year we want to do this and Afton, can we get a little piece of the pie, a little larger piece of the pie and then next year we get it back? That's up to that committee. And then we have also, it's called Senior Center General Purpose, and that is awarded to Concord and Mount Pleasant, and that should be something that we get at all three sites once it's requested.
Right.
So the only hiccup we may run into is that it is a shared use facility, but because there are designated areas in the Active Living Centers that are specific to our active living versus the library, I believe, working closely with AAA as I have over the past few years, we'll be able to continue to go after this funding and continue to offer the things that we've been offering and improving.
Correct. Thank you. Other questions for Ian? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is appointments to boards and committees. You all have received those in your agenda. Also, you would have received those by email. Does anybody have any questions or comments about, about any of these? They're, they're pretty straightforward. I think, you know, we had, we had some public comments and discussions about appointments and committees. At our last meeting, there was an article in the newspaper about it as well. I, I found it quite interesting. You know, the, the school of government had indicated that's up to individual boards and commit, boards of commissioners as to how they want to handle that. And so, you know, I thought, okay, I wonder how we came up with those rules to start with, and I wasn't specifically looking for them, but I did, was looking for something else in some of our old minutes, and I believe I was looking at, I think it was 1984 or might, might have been, yeah, I think it was 1984, and it was just kind of interesting to read, you know, how the commissioners were conducting business at that time. And they had approved an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission of some individual. And, and at the end, they said, well, we want to thank everybody that applied. We had 27 applications for this board. And, yeah, I looked at that and I said, well, we do not have 27 applications for any board. I think we have as many as 14 vacancies on one of our nursing home advisory boards. So I'm sure that that's how that process evolved, and I say that primarily for people that, that might be watching, just to create some awareness that we do have vacancies. And I think the ones that we just approved are a pretty good example of those that, for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, I think that every single one of these are designated slots that, that go to particular people. And Dr. Elise Pugh-Lilly is, is filling a seat vacant, vacated by Jim Howden, who's our finance director, and that is a seat that is designated for, for county, for a county representative, and, and it's true with a lot of the others, but at any rate, I thought that trivia was interesting. And so if there's no comments on that one, we'll move to item 4.3, carryover of outstanding fiscal year, 23 purchase orders and contracts. We're happy to have Raj with us for that item.
Good afternoon. At the end of each fiscal year, the procurement department determines if the outstanding purchase orders and contracts, they review them and work with the departments to determine which ones need to be carried forward. At the end of the process, they came up with about just under $4.3 million in purchase orders and just a little over $4.6 million in contracts that needed to be carried forward. As part of the end, end of the year finance process, the, these items are carried forward as part of the end of the year finance process. What doesn't happen is the entry for the fund balance. What doesn't happen is the entry for the fund balance. So, what we're asking tonight is the the list, the detailed list of the contracts and purchase orders I included in your package. What we're asking is that 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 list be approved along with the budget amendment to budget the fund balance for part of the entry. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Raj? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to next item, 5311 Community Transportation Grant. We're happy to have Bob Bushy with us for that item.
Good afternoon. We're presenting our FY '25 5311 Community Transportation Grant from the state of North Carolina. This grant covers administrative costs for the transportation department as well as capital bus replacement. The administrative portion of this grant is already predetermined by the state. They send us the amount we're going to get. So, for FY '25, that amount is 194,578 with a 15% local match, 29,188. The capital portion of this grant is determined on our needs. As most of you are probably aware, there is a backlog of vehicles across the nation. We just received seven buses that we asked for three years ago. So, our need in this grant is 13 vehicles. That puts the total amount of those vehicles at 1,755,000 with a 10% local match of 175,500. Making the total 5311 grant request for '25, 1,949,578 with a local match of 204,688. I will tell you, because of the need throughout the state, I do not anticipate the state awarding us all of those vehicles in this grant. Probably be about half of that, so this number will most likely drop, but I wanted to get it in the grant so next year we can ask for a priority over counties that may be looking for expansion vehicles. So, this does require a public hearing and we'd ask that you hold that public hearing, accept the grant and associated resolutions.
Okay, questions for Bob? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, I'm going to request a little change in the agenda and would like to, that was item four point four, would like to go to item four point 10 next. And then I'll also, I think we've been at it for about two hours, and so be thinking about whether or not you want to take a break after that one. But Daniel, if you would, due item grant application, North Carolina Agricultural Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund.
Okay, this is the conservation easements we were talking about earlier. This year, we, like I was saying, we have the state funding for one of them, one of our easements and do not have the federal funding yet. The state has came out with another process that we can use so that we can get majority of money from them and not have to go for the federal money. I've talked to the farmer that we have ranked, we ranked all our applicants, and he will have two applications and this will be for roughly about 113 acres. And we would like to, at our last board meeting, our board wanted us to, you know, come ask for authorization to go for these two grants for this one landowner, Wilbur and Williams' farm down in Midland.
Okay, questions on that item, commissioners? So, I have an unrelated question. Do you know how many acres there are in Cabarrus County?
Oh, gosh, no.
I was going to ask David Thrift that question also, but
I'm not sure, really.
Yeah. I think we have 360 square miles.
That's close.
Yeah, and if I were real smart, I could compute that to acres, but I'm not, so, yeah, but that that'll be homework. Any any other questions on these grant application? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, would you like to take a break? I think maybe there may be some sandwiches or food if if you're ready. It's up to you guys, we're halfway through. Okay, so we will take a break and reconvene at five minutes after six.
233,000 acres.
233,000 acres, thank you.
Okay, we're back from the break and we will now move to item 4.5. Ambulance receivable write-off. We're happy to have Jim Howden for that item.
Good evening Commissioners. Each year as part of our annual procedures is we evaluate the accounts receivable for the ambulance billing. Historically, we collect less than 1% of these receivables after four years. So I'm here to ask that you allow the Finance Department to write off fiscal year 2019's balance of $1,823,817.28. Keep in mind, we still keep collecting these funds, but this helps make our financials look a little more accurate by writing this off.
Great. Questions for Jim? All right, thank you sir. And we move to item 4.6, Budget Amendment for SUN Program Grant. I think Rodney's got that one. Or Jim.
All right, I guess. So in March of 2023, Cabarrus County was awarded $1 million as part of the SUN program, the SUN grant. These funds, of course, are used to support families impacted by substance abuse. The Board did approve those funds. Originally, those funds were supposed to be spent by June of 2023. So we did not budget those, anything left over in 2024. We found out in July that they've extended the program. So we're just asking the Board to approve the budget amendment so we can appropriate these funds and use them in 2024.
Questions on that item. Would you say that the SUN program is excellent program and we are very fortunate to have received these grants? And I think a lot of people are benefiting from it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item 4.7, Lottery Proceeds.
Each year, we budget in the Community Investment Fund lottery proceeds to help pay school debt. This year, we budgeted 2.3 million, and that's a combination from Kannapolis City Schools and Cabarrus County Schools. So we're asking the Board to approve and allow us to request those funds from the North Carolina State Lottery. In addition, we are requesting $432,161 from the repairs and renovation portion of the lottery funds. These will be used for the HVAC replacement at the Education Center. If you recall during our budget meetings, there was 29 deferred maintenance projects that the schools had requested. We agreed to do all 29 of them. Then we moved funds around a little bit, do some tennis courts, and change some of the HVAC projects. This was the one project left off. And so we're requesting these funds so we can complete that, or have the funds available in 2024 for all 29 projects.
Jim, this is an annual request, is that right?
The original for the debt is an annual request, yes?
Right. Well, it seemed like we'd just done this last month. The time just flies by so quickly. But, you know, just for the viewing audience, you know, they always ask, you know, what about lottery funds? What about lottery funds? And so the $2,300,000 is what we get annually from the lottery.
Yes, sir. And you are correct. I think we did do this probably in April. And that's more of a new Finance Director getting up to speed. So we're trying to get the funds sooner now, so we can get them in our account and utilize them.
I like it in our account better than I do in Ross's.
Just to make sure it's clear, so the 2.3 million is what we get for the maintenance and the debt. The school system gets other lottery proceeds for operational expenditures. So there is more than that that's coming here locally.
Do you know how much they receive for that annually?
I don't have it off the top of my head. So 100% of lottery proceeds in the state of North Carolina go to education in one form or fashion. But what that allocation is, I would have to look up.
Okay, any other questions on that item? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, 4.8, from Planning, Community Development Budget Amendment. And we're happy to have Kelly Sifford.
Thank you. As we have discussed many times, the grant funding for our programs is never allocated in time for us to budget accurately for the upcoming year. So this is just truing up our actual grant amounts to the amount that we need to expend. So there's, it's done by grouping. There is a sheet in front of you. I did notice right before the meeting, an error, a small error in one of them, so I had that fixed. That one is, one, there's a 10% match. So the 10% match in this case for the increased amount that we got was $1,057. The rest of this money is all grant money. So if there are any questions?
Okay, thank you. Next item, 4.11, Strategic Plan, Planning Process. And we're happy to have Kasha Thompson and Ellie Landrum. I skipped one. 4.9. Ah, yes, that's where I got off track when we moved 4.10. Yes, from Safety in Risk Property and Liability Funds, John Bradley and Kyle Billifor.
While they're coming up, just to answer your question real quick, I pulled it up from the N.C. Lottery website. 15.7 million was the total amount that went to Cabarrus County in fiscal year 2022.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We're here tonight to request a budget amendment for replacement of a vehicle, basically to transfer funds from our Property and Liability Internal Service Fund to purchase a vehicle for one that was totaled in an accident.
Typically, we're up here in front of you, usually for EMS or Sheriff's Department, so it's no different than this in those past instances.
I'm sorry?
It's no different than those past instances in terms of coming up for that fund. If it's a total loss, the actual county departments don't carry enough money in their budget just to do a replacement vehicle when something's lost like that. The only budget for vehicles are actually replacing, not something in a total loss. So for transparency, we would come up in front of the Board for that issue.
Is this a replacement for the truck that went into the lake?
That's correct.
Okay. I've seen a picture of that. How did that happen? Or what went wrong? From what you, from what you know. I know it's not your department or your...
I'm not sure that we should really discuss the facts of that in a board meeting.
Nobody's told us. People's...
That's a personality issue, so it needs to be discussed.
Okay, any other questions?
We don't mean to avoid your questions. We just need to make sure it's a personality thing right now.
Well, people had sent me pictures of it and I had not heard anything about it. So that's, you know, nobody had told us what happened. So I was just curious. That's why I asked.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you. Okay, now we go to 2023 Cabarrus County Strategic Planning Process. Kasha and Ellie.
Hello. All right. My name is Kasha Thompson and this is Ellie Landrum and we are your strategy team. We're here to present our recommendation for Cabarrus County's next strategic plan. This is not the first time the Board has seen these concepts that we'll present, but it is the first time that we're making all of this public. So we want to make sure the community is aware of the direction we intend to go and how we got there.
Yeah, so this evening, we're going to share our plan development process, review the proposed vision, mission, values, and goals, share the strategies, and then introduce next steps. And the words on the page, if you looked at the agenda before today, the design is a little different. We've been busy the last few weeks working on the design, but the information should match what you've studied ahead of this meeting. All right. When we started this process, Ellie and I had no idea how the plan would shake out, but we worked with management to develop a set of criteria for the plan. We believe the recommended plan sets up a framework to meet each of these expectations outlined in the slide. It's a plan that's uniquely Cabarrus County government. It's so specific that it likely wouldn't work as a blueprint for any other government agency, yet it's so broad that our employees can see how their roles connect to it in several different ways. And if you're comparing our plan to what we've done in the past, I'd say those two factors alone make it stand out. The reason it's turned out this way, it's the most inclusive process we've had for any project I can remember at my time with the county. So the process, the discussion began in January. Since that time, the process has evolved in beautiful, meaningful ways. We formed a core team of six folks of various tenures and roles from across the county to provide meaningful feedback on important decisions. They helped nail down the meaningful words in our vision and mission. They shaped the goals, added context to the values, and set the tone for the visuals. We tried something new with employees, pulse surveys, to get quick feedback from hundreds of folks. These included gap analyses to understand where we need to grow. There were also opportunities to let us know where we were missing the mark and where we needed to clarify information. We held presentations and workshops with nearly every department in the county to share news of the plan and listen to what employees think we can do to improve as an organization. Employees who couldn't come in person or chose not to were offered online surveys, asking for their feedback and their big ideas. And our employees alone selected the values.
So we had a total of 845 inputs, which we were very excited to receive that many inputs from our employees. We had four surveys, four direct connect articles, and 25 different workshops. So we were able to engage a large portion of our workforce, and they gave us great, great insights.
We listened again and again and again, and people are providing honest feedback and attaching their name to it. So not only are we building a plan, but we're building trust with our employees. And for them to step forward and say, this is how I believe we can improve, I think says a lot about their trust in the process and what they want to see for the organization. They want to stay here as employees and they want to build an organization that, they're so invested in it, they want to see it grow in these great ways. In a recent pulse survey of employees about the engagement process, they rated the level of engagement in the strategic planning process just shy of four stars, 3.88 on a five-point scale. So the ones who answered the survey thought that we had done a pretty good job of bringing them into this process. We also had opportunities to shape the plan with community input from the community survey, which we used to base the plan off of, to GOV 101 Workshopping Plan elements with our ARPA-funded agencies, which of course represent thousands and thousands of folks that have high needs in Cabarrus County. We needed to move beyond a thumbs up or down. We wanted to, we wanted context to understand how we as an organization can move forward. From all this feedback, clear themes began to emerge. And you can see on the slide, we highlighted all the places within the process that we asked for input. So the implementation forecast, we informed the plan through inputs, we shaped it, and we leaned on a balanced scorecard approach. We needed to build a plan that's measurable and flexible, so when the environment changes or we see the impacts aren't working, we can make adjustments without fracturing the foundation of the plan.
And we plan on tracking our plan progress through measures and data currently acquired through current measures. But then what will set us apart from the prior plan is we will also collect new data and new measures to track the progress of our success with this plan.
To continue the forecast, we want to share how this plan will make its way through the organization. When the FY '25 budget rolls out in July of 2024, it will be aligned with this new plan. With approval, Ellie and I will begin work to develop an implementation plan. Think of that as kind of what our Mental Health Advisory Board has done. This will be a task force of folks that are assigned around this goal statement to come up with ways to execute the strategy. So the team will then have ownership of the plan. Then departments will take their assigned responsibilities and align their resources to them. They'll determine budgetary impacts and what they can do to track progress. They'll report up to the goal task force. Because the plan is inclusive, most departments will likely need to report up to several different task forces based on what our goals are. Then, as roles and responsibilities are assigned to individuals or groups, you'll see frontline involvement in carrying out the plan. A very important component of the plan is to ask for and implement frontline recommendations. And now, we'll get to the heart of the strategic plan. Our vision, Cabarrus County strives to empower our people, act intentionally and decisively, and focus on the future. Our vision is intentionally short and direct. It's impactful. It speaks to ways we need to stretch as an organization. You're likely familiar with vision statements that are kind of flowery, talking about how we want to reach for the stars and create a place where folks live, work, and play. We went a slightly different direction focusing on stretch. We started with the understanding that state legislature guides what a county in North Carolina can and can't do. So instead of saying what we do, we shifted to a vision set on improving how we accomplish our responsibilities. What we heard is there was a clear preference for our focus on people. Statements focused on the future were more likely to be endorsed, and there was a preference for shorter statements. Employee feedback on the drafted vision is that it's strong, clear, and bonus, easy to remember, which is important when you're doing all this work.
Yeah, in the poll survey we did last week, 90% of employees who responded to their survey said they thought the vision was attainable, yet ambitious. So good mix of both.
Our mission, through meaningful partnerships and engagement, we serve and support all on their journey to thrive. Our mission is how we will accomplish our vision. It focuses on what we can do to accomplish the vision, how we can do it, and why we'll do it. Our what? We serve and support the public. Our how? We're going to move beyond collaboration and into partnerships. Our why? We're creating opportunities for everyone in Cabarrus County to thrive, which goes to our brand statement. We can meet them where they are, support their journey, but what we can't do is guarantee an outcome. We're mindful of the individual freedoms, individual responsibilities, and individual decisions that limit what we can do.
And again, 90% of employees who were surveyed last week believe that the mission statement reflects the things that the county can do to accomplish the vision. So here are our five values, teamwork, respect, communication, integrity, and accountability. And these five values were selected through an exercise with our staff team and approved in whole by management. We combined the top values provided by staff and the Board, picking out the five that had the highest voted preference. So these are purely employee-driven values and Board values as well. Employees who weighed in also described how they would like to see these values used in our organization. And some of those common themes include training, development, and support, open communication, clear expectations and consistency, and modified performance evaluations such as 360 reviews. We went forward with defining what it would look like to live those values, and we took frontline feedback and considered feedback offered by management and department heads. So 94% of employees that we surveyed la- So 94% of employees that we surveyed last week believe that the five values you see on the screen are clear and meaningful, and 96 believe that if we demonstrate these values, our workplace culture will improve.
That was pretty exciting for us to see. It should be noted that in addition to being held accountable for these values themselves, employees are asking how the values can protect them from moments of incivility some face when engaging with the public. So we want to be mindful of that as well. Our goals, next we'll review the goals. There are five goals that we believe will move us toward our vision. Engagement, workplace culture, innovation, stewardship, and advancement. The goals are a path to achieve our vision over the next three to five years. They're broad, can apply to various departments and roles within those departments. People across the organization should feel connected to the goals. The impact we make on the goals should be measurable, and the strategies within those goals are specific ways we can make progress toward the goals. They align departments to a narrowed focus, yet give the departments flexibility to administer them in a way that suits their responsibilities, audience, and programming. We had to streamline our strategies. Our group came up with several that were great, but we had to narrow it down to a handful that we could focus on realistically. We considered the timeframe we want to work in, the resources available to us, potential roadblocks, and environmental scans. So again, this is not changing or adding things to our plate, rather changing how we do the work we do as a government agency. Engagement, we want to strengthen community ties to increase understanding, participation, and trust. And the way we'd like to do that is by improving the value of information, resources, and opportunities we offer the community. We want to design and implement purposeful relationship-building activities to elevate the county's presence within the community, and develop new approaches to manage customer requests and establish standards to ensure positive customer experiences.
In the employee survey we did last week, you're going to hear me say that several more times, 80% of our employees that we surveyed believe that this goal and/or its strategies relate to their role, so they see themselves in this goal.
Workplace culture, support employees through shared actions, values, and culture to deliver exceptional service and become an employer of choice. Our strategies under this goal are to invest in and foster opportunities for consistent employee support, development, and advancement, enhance the county's employee recognition efforts by honoring growth, contributions, achievements, and dedication to the organization, build strong supportive teams by developing an organizational framework that helps employees recognize their strengths, address their weaknesses, and adapt to changes to the benefit of the entire team, and offer employees greater access to information and opportunities to collaborate.
And thankfully, 87% of the employees we surveyed believe that this relates to their role.
Stewardship, responsibly manage resources and care for assets to support the interests of our community, sustain responsible financial practices, uphold mandated responsibilities, and meet evolving needs, promote and support maximum efficiency, durability, safety, functionality, and sustainability of county assets, and partner to safeguard natural and historic resources.
72% of employees surveyed feel like this fits their role.
Innovation, modernize county government to meet current and future needs, improve efficiency, and raise the level of accountability. To do this, we plan to measure and report progress made toward the county's strategic and business plans to drive internal performance and accountability, develop guidelines to assess and adjust ordinances, policies, and procedures for relevance and efficiency, and create opportunities for employee involvement in the decision-making process and practice responsive leadership.
63% of our employees believe this relates to their role. We'd like to increase that over the next four years.
Advancement, create pathways for upward economic mobility to support a prosperous and sustainable future for our community. To do this, we plan to connect residents to the full range of county programs and services available to them. So once they plug into the county, we want to make sure they get everything they possibly can from us. Support efforts to diversify and strengthen the local economy, grow internal and external partnerships to accomplish shared goals for prioritized needs, align workforce capacities to strategic priorities, population growth, and service demand.
And 69% of our employees believe that this goal and/or strategies relate to their role.
And Ellie's mentioned these different percentages. To me, it's a great benefit to see folks see themselves in multiple goals. When we're talking, nearly 70, 75% of folks who work for the county are saying that they can see themselves fit in across the board. I think that speaks to the high level of work and engagement we had in the plan and the level of investment employees will have. Now, do we wish more people see themselves in workplace culture and stewardship and innovation? Yes, but I think that comes with education, and that will show some great rewards in the end. Plan outcomes, if we accomplish our plan, we'll have a better relationship with the people we serve, be known as one of the best local employers, demonstrate an efficient and effective use of tax dollars, become a government that's equipped for the future, and actively support efforts to improve the quality of life in Cabarrus County. And I think that's pretty darn fantastic. All of this is to connect more people to the resources that can change their lives, because we all know that's what we ultimately do as a county organization or hope to do.
So some of the plan monitoring and reporting ideas that we have moving forward is that this fall, we will be forming our task forces, and regularly, they'll be developing plans and leading the goals. Once the new budget aligns to the plan in FY '25, we will report out on how things are going. These will be made public by formal presentations, reports, written submissions, and the agenda, and on our website, on our social media channels. And that should be quarterly, starting next year, once the plan is adopted with the budget. And then annually, we'll be reviewing the plan as part of the budget process. A formal annual plan report will come out at the end of each budget year, and a monitoring framework that we have here is part of a best practice for accountability, support, and ongoing development, so that the public, the board, and our staff are aware of the progress we're making towards this plan.
Once the plan's adopted, we'll hit the ground running by sharing the information we've provided you today. They say you have to hear a message seven times before it sinks in, so we'll do our best to do that with employees and the community. Our rollout will include some of the same strategies we used for the brand, but we'll enhance it with new considerations for engagement. And speaking of engagement, I want to make sure folks know and understand that while we did have some input on designing the plan, a lot of this was around the internal framework. As these goal areas build out, we plan to have public engagement in each of the goal areas. And this is a flexible plan, so as we review information year to year, we hope to include more opportunities for public impact and participation, so they can help guide where we need to go and meet them. The brand elements, you see some design work there. It's designed to meet our current brand and complement it. It's focused on the typography or the design of the letters. It's designed to feel strong and bold throughout the assets. We use dotted lines, underlines, and highlights that look and feel handwritten to make everything feel personable and approachable. And the design team stressed that this was because there was so much input in the plan that they felt like that personal touch of a highlighted section would really carry through the fact that people were part of the process, and it's not a mechanical process, that there's a human element to it. So that's why things don't exactly look perfect, but they represent people being part of the process, which I thought was pretty cool. Yeah, it can be used intentionally to... It is intentionally used to set our strategic plan materials apart from other county materials. So as you see presentations and whatnot about the plan, you'll see these elements come out. So thank you for your time tonight and on this process. It's been a long road that we stretched out a little bit to include more engagement, but it's been a very meaningful process for our employees. People at all levels of the organization have participated, and we want to thank and celebrate the contributions of Geraldine Gardner and Kelly Weston from Central Lina. Their guidance and facilitation was just the right level of support we needed for our organization, and they helped maximize your time and pushed us to develop stronger products. So thank you to the board and management and all the employees who participated for the support you've given this process so far. We've got some core team members here, and of course Ellie's done such a fantastic job, so I want to make sure she's celebrated.
Thank you. I just am really excited that we could ask employees for input and they responded, and we were able to use their feedback, and it's part of this plan. So it's just as much their plan as it is ours. That's really what I'm most excited about.
Yeah, now comes the hard part, change, right? We've operated as an organization in this way for a very long time. So the more folks we can bring on board and support the changes that we're going to go through, the better. We're going to grow and develop as employees and leaders in this new vision for our organization, and we look forward to the ongoing board support as champions of our people, drivers of action, and trusted guardians for our future. So we'll take your comments, make any final changes, and present it as a packaged unit for the September regular meeting.
Great. Thank you. Questions for Kasha or Ellie? Good job. We appreciate it. It's been a good process. Look forward to the continuation and the results.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we go now to item 4.12 from Tax Administration, 2013 Write-Off, Real and Personal Outstanding Taxes. David Drift.
So the Tax Collections Office uses all available resources, due diligence, and statutory remedies to authorize us to collect taxes on both real and personal property. However, North Carolina General Statute 105378, which is titled "Use of Remedies Barred," prevents the tax collector from exercising any new enforcement remedy on any delinquent bills that are more than 10 years old from the date they became due. So tax year 2013 tax bills became due September 1st, 2013, and are now 10 years old. And because we cannot initiate enforced collection on these tax bills, we ask this board to allow us to write those off for accounting purposes. Our request tonight is a motion to approve the write-off of real and personal outstanding taxes for 2013 totaling $110,410.18. Your initial agenda item was sent out, included a list of insolvants from 2020. That actually, the period for that insolvent list to be written off is after five years instead of three years. So that'll be... It's been removed from the agenda items. We're just looking for a write-off of the 2013 taxes now.
So typically, if somebody doesn't pay their property taxes on a piece of property, that property is... Leans are placed on it and it's auctioned off, right?
There is a foreclosure process as one of the remedies we can use to collect taxes on real estate. That is not always the best option, and certainly, there are cost factors involved, and numerous things that can prevent that from being an option that we pursue. And that's some of the reason you'll see some of these kind of smaller value properties that maintain a tenure of delinquency.
Right. So then what happens to the properties if they've not paid in 10 years?
So what we're asking for is just to write off this as an outstanding balance for our accounting purposes. Those taxes are still due and payable, and if a taxpayer makes any payment, we still apply that to that taxes.
Well, I understand that, but if somebody hasn't paid in 10 years, are you saying the property has changed hands, or?
No, so that...
So I mean, if we can just pick any off of this list, if they've not paid, and I know probably a lot of this is not real estate, probably a lot of this is personal property and business property, but if it is a tangible piece of real estate, then we... So after 10 years, we write this off, then the person continues owning the property and still doesn't pay us?
That's correct. So this doesn't change the ownership of the property. This particular instance could continue to have delinquent taxes that build up. It could be a particular year that had an outstanding balance we just haven't been able to collect on. There's a lot of different instances, but this action is just an accounting piece for writing that off.
Right. I mean, I understand that, you know, as far as not keeping this on the books, but if somebody's not paid for 10 years, then I would hate to think that we don't foreclose on the property.
Right. So what the statute prevents is us taking any action on those bills that are more than 10 years old. So at this point, we cannot initiate foreclosure on that delinquency, which is why we ask to write that off. If we haven't taken the action within a 10-year period, we can't continue on pursuing that from an enforced collection standpoint.
But the practice is that we pursue that within the 10 years, foreclosure if somebody is not paying correctly.
In the instances where it makes sense to use that action. So there are properties that are either potentially low in value or unmarketable, in which that foreclosure process just doesn't make sense within our kind of standards that we use to identify action that's necessary. So we do not foreclose on every property that potentially is delinquent.
Okay. So if it's a gullie piece of property down, you know, then we just won't foreclose on it?
That's correct. We make some determination as to what makes sense to take action for foreclosure and what does not.
Now, like I said, I know probably the majority of this list is personal property, you know, business, I guess, well, personal property. But so what is the process in that? If somebody don't pay for five years, then what?
Personal property has... Much of the same actions are still available to us in terms of enforced collection. We can garnish wages. We can garnish bank accounts. We can levy on that property. If we can identify the property, we could seize it and sell personal property as well. A lot of times, that's far more difficult in terms of, once we've assessed and taxed and there's a delinquent balance, just identifying that property that could have left the state, left the area.
Yeah, I would say probably most of these people have moved far on, and there'd be no way to get in contact with them.
So for this 10-year period, I can tell you, we've taken every action that we felt was reasonable to try to collect these taxes. Certainly, having $110,000 remaining after a 10-year period is a very, very small percentage of what our total collection is.
Right. It is. The list just looks very long, but I know it's probably just small, small increments, so.
That's correct. It's the small list remaining from the about $112,000 tax bills that we sent out initially.
Well, and really just for the public to understand that we're not just not trying to collect and we're just writing it off and...
No, that's correct. This is at the end of a 10-year period of making action to collect them.
And so if somebody wants to try to sell one of these pieces, if this is a piece of real estate, and they want to sell it, what happens?
At the point of write-off, there would be no official lien placed on the property from a property tax standpoint.
Right.
A lot of the pieces of real estate that may still be on this list after a 10-year collection piece may have more outstanding balances, not just property tax-related. So there certainly could be some issue there, but there's nothing within our delinquent standpoint that would prevent transfer of property. It's just that the balance that is transferred as still delinquent would continue to be delinquent and ovable.
Probably, very likely, if it's a piece of property and they didn't pay property taxes on it 10 years ago, they probably hadn't been paying it in the 10 years since then either. True or false?
That is most likely the case.
Yes. Right. So they're still on the collection list for later years.
I'd say that's the majority of the real estate parcels are multiple-year delinquencies.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to approval of the regular meeting agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. I do not think we have taken any action tonight that would change anything on there. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda and to schedule the necessary public hearings, which I think there are at least two there. Some move?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do not have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
One, two, three.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.